The first agenda item is subject A, executive session, AAA Northeast versus the PBD Council et al. I'll now entertain a motion for the committee to go in executive session to discuss this matter. You've heard the motion. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, will we be returning and reporting out on the AAA upon its conclusion?
At this point, we'll be hearing, we're getting a, I guess, an update on the matter, and we will be coming out of executive session, depending on what in executive session we may report out. At this point, I'm not sure.
Okay, just simply that we'll be returning back to regular session just needs to be in the motion, that's all.
Thank you. Good point of order. You've heard the motion. On the motion, any further discussion? Roll call vote please.
Counselors Gould, Manning Martin.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I thought this was pretty comprehensive. I would say the same thing that whenever it comes to situations like this is if we run into an issue, we can always amend it. It's not hard to do. I would just also with regards to the hearings, so we would have a single public, the anticipation is every public hearing would be, we would no longer make it part of the process to recess that public hearing every time unless obviously the council, it was the will of the council due to the actual content of the hearing to do so. Otherwise, we would try to hear and approve the same evening if possible. And the person wouldn't necessarily have to be here, they could come in through Zoom. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's a great question, and that's exactly what I was proposing is that, you know, we move to the two-hearing approach, which I fully agreed with when we were forced to go fully remote during the pandemic, and I think it was the correct one. Gives up multiple opportunities for counselors to hear from, you know, residents by phone, you know, email, and also let certainly the public take part in a couple of public hearings if they wanted to. But I guess the way I phrase it is, and to your point, is if we go towards the dual hybrid, if you will, both Zoom and public participation, it would be my thought that we go to a single public hearing unless it is the will of the council. I think some of the factors in that is I think that we go back to the way we operated prior to the pandemic, but also I want to make sure that we're given, you know, a lot of thought to the businesses that are coming and applicants that are coming before us. And if we continue to, you know, make them wait another two weeks for another hearing when we're having both in-person as well as online Zoom participation, I think we're just going to, you know, unnecessarily delay their application process as well as, you know, unnecessarily, I guess, constrain the business before us also. So, long answer, Council Melville, but thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I think, yeah, that makes complete sense to me. I think that your outline is fine. I also think the benefit of it is it's very simple, and people have been operating this way for some time, so I have no problem supporting this this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Turco?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm in agreement with Council Melville. I think, you know, simple but thorough. May 13th would be a great day to have the public back in for city council meetings with us. The only thing I don't see addressed here is seating for the public, and I know there was talk about possibly us going up on the stage, which I really wouldn't be in favor of. I think the school committee did that years ago, and it has a, you know, almost a negative connotation to, you know, the power of being up here and the people being down there. So I would like to stay on floor level. Maybe we could have the public sit on the stage, or we could have the public sit in the balcony, but I am in favor of moving forward tonight with May 13th as the opening.
Council Turco, in answer to your question, I left it vague on the safety protocols, meaning six feet physical distance for all attendees. The thought would be that, you know, the majority of the people might be upstairs on the, in the balcony, if you will, and then certainly there are limitations with everyone being able to get up there, so if we have elderly folks or anyone with any kind of, you know, walkers or whatnot, there will be probably seating out towards the hallway. So we are going to work on those logistics because we want to make sure everyone's comfortable, and also there's a platform for people to be able to have, you know, safe distancing. You know, ultimately, this is not only, you know, for all attendees protection, but also to make sure that it's just not people wandering around and not doing the social distancing, and certainly anyone who comes together with a family member, they can sit together. And I think that there might be some hearings, we might have close to 100 people, so we have to figure out that, but I think I'm going to work with, you know, getting some of these particulars out. I agree with you, I don't want to be up on the stage, although if I could just be there by myself, no, just kidding, we would all say that, no kidding. I just don't think that works. I want to make sure we're out here with our residents on the same, you know, level. That's where we belong, and I don't think it adds anything to the process. But any other councils? Council Manny Martin, and then Council Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And you've already touched upon one issue that I was going to raise, which I'm glad, which would be ADA compliance, because the elevators don't go up to the balcony area. So you've already addressed that, so that's in the forefront of your mind, I'm glad. And then the other thing is, is once the governor's order is rescinded, I'm all in favor of continuing Zoom meetings in addition to in-person, but if we do continue the Zoom after the governor's order is rescinded, council, we have to have a physical presence So if, because otherwise it would be a violation of open meeting law if everybody were on Zoom and just the chair and Allison were here. So if we do move forward in that direction, counselors would have to let the city council president and the clerk know if they were planning to not attend and to go by Zoom so that we would make sure that we didn't violate open meeting law by not having a full quorum. So that's my two cents on this plan and I'm all in favor of moving forward with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Manny Martin. Great point. I should have mentioned that, you know, certainly we are under, still under the Governor Baker's emergency order. And technically, if that ended, right now, the Zoom technology, you know, is not, it's not something we may continue or be allowed to. But it's my understanding that there's, you know, legislation afoot to allow that type of application or, excuse me, technology to continue. So, no, I understand that. Council Gould.
Thank you, Mr. President. Do you know, Mr. President, is the City Hall going to be open late on Thursdays, starting on the 13th? Is that the, is that the date everything opens up? Or is it this only for city council meetings?
This is, we're only discussing city council meetings at this time. I don't believe there's a plan afoot to lengthen Thursday hours as they used to. But I also, I'm not going to step into that lane. This is only for city council meetings.
The reason I ask is one of your checklist here, you check with City Hall security staff. Is there going to be someone that will be here on Thursday nights for us?
Correct. I used the phrase "security." It'll be someone who will be, the entrance will be where it is now for the building for all participants to come in on the handicap door on Chestnut Street. There'll be a personnel there to greet folks, have them sign in and do, because we want to make sure that if there's, happens to be some sort of outbreak of COVID due to attendees, we want to make sure we have a contact tracing and just to let them know and more than likely we'll escort them up here because not everyone is familiar with City Hall. So it will be similar to how if people come for business during the day at City Hall. So I use the word "security" or "staff," it's just someone there to kind of, you know, help us navigate this process.
Thank you, sir.
Phil Walton, Council Walton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think this is great and I think it's probably an evolving document as we continue to figure out the best way to get everyone back here. The only consideration that I would bring up, that I would ask for you to think about is the ordering in which we allow the public to participate if we have a hybrid model between Zoom and in-person response during special permit hearings. Aside from that, I think it looks great. I know we're trying to take the steps forward as we can and that this will continue to be adapted. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Walton. I got, Clark Danforth had just asked me, I heard your statement. I just remind all councils, even with our masks, sometimes let's move the microphones closer so that, but I believe you had asked, which is a great question, is, you know, how should we order, have the order for public participation? I'll throw it out there that if someone is here, that they probably, should probably try to start with those folks that are here in the building. But I'm open to suggestions. I don't want to make it feel that people have to come down here to have their voices heard. I just want to make sure that everyone has the ability to do that. But that's, there are certain logistics that aren't here and I think we, as we move closer to that date, we will have that refined because it's important and we don't want to just have a wild west. Thank you. Council McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm also supportive of moving forward under these guidelines. Just one thing that dropped off the list from an earlier version that was circulated, that was dated March 25th, was the, I think you were trying to get us to think about what the protocol would be around the podium and the microphones and so forth. And I don't see that on this list. So I think we should add that back on. I don't know that we need to get a granular approach to that, but, you know, I, I don't want to be in a situation where we're here on the first night this is happening and we, somebody starts walking towards the microphone and we don't know if that's okay or not okay. We should, we should probably decide, are we going to have people, you know, if we're asking them to be socially distanced and perhaps in the balcony, should they be away from them to speak from there so that we're not having people walking around and potentially creating distance issues, particularly if there happen to be a larger number of people here? Or would the expectation be that they're not going to speak from, from remote parts of the hall, but they are going to come, in which case we're going to have to make sure that the podium and the mic gets cleaned, that type of thing? So, Mr. President, I don't know if you had any additional thoughts on that, but again, it was on the first outline and was a good point. I think we should carry it forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Council McGinn. I think the section that was left off because I put it under kind of like the, almost like the restaurant rules. But yeah, I think my thought would be, and I'll just throw it out, keep throwing thoughts out here. I get in trouble when I'm doing that at my house because my family tells me to stop giving thoughts. But I think that we should have the, any speakers come to the podium and certainly we can, if there's a large enough crowd, address and say that we'd like to have this section come forward. And I think we do have to have, you know, people will be wearing masks and that's another thing that, and we can talk a little bit about, further about that. That's very important that we, we have some sort of control. We just don't have everyone gathering and lining up to speak and that we maintain the six, maybe even more with that microphone. But yeah, we have to have, I've got to work with, with the City Hall personnel to see who can help us with that in terms of, you know, sanitizing the microphone, you know, that speaking area and kind of getting those, they're important because if we don't have that kind of outline for people, it just becomes chaotic. So I didn't put it on here. I'm certainly open to that and certainly, as I put in the original discussion, as safety is our priority. In addition to letting people participate, we want to make sure everyone goes home in the same condition they were.
Thank you, Mr. President. So on that same note, so is, would we have like certain seats blocked off like they've done in, you know, we've all been in waiting rooms and so forth where you just, you're not able to sit down in certain places to establish the distance? Is that the type of thing you're going to be working out with the, with the City Hall staff? Would maybe?
Exactly, yeah.
Put some, put some chairs around kind of sparsely just so that we can set the right expectation in terms of proper distances? That those, those are things that you plan to work out with the staff?
Correct, yes. Thank you. Great question. Yeah, we have to have that outlined because otherwise, you know, first of all, I'm trying to run the meeting and you folks are participating. None of us want to start saying, you know, Mrs. Brown, could you please stop sitting next to, you know, the participant who you're, you know, we don't want to have that. We want to make sure like any time in a public place, we have that. Those are certainly details that will be in place so that we can, that everyone knows the rules and where to go and there's no second guessing on that stuff. We've all been in situations where someone is not following what I would call protocol, guidelines, whatever. We don't want to deal with that. We just want to have everyone have the same ground rules. We all, you know, maintain social distancing. We all wear masks. I do, I hesitated when I put that on the document, that face masks must be worn at all times by all attendees. I understand people have health conditions. It would be my thought that if someone is unable to wear a mask because of a medical condition, that they participate remotely because it's just going to get too difficult trying to figure out, you know, I'm not wearing a mask because it's my belief that I don't need to wear one and I just don't want to be in the position of policing that. So, long answer to that again, but it is important. We will have this outline where people should be sitting and marking the areas where they cannot sit. So, thank you. Council Saslaw.
Thank you, Council President, and I will support this going forward. I think it's great news. I, I just, actually, before I forget, you might want to make a note, I would definitely recommend that the City Hall agendas be printed and some left upstairs so that sometimes the people can follow the meeting. If we have five or six special hearings, they can keep track because some of them might have to come downstairs so they'll know when the special permit hearing is going to happen. So put agendas upstairs and downstairs. And as Council McGinn alluded to, I know you talked about maybe in the hall, but I, from what I've heard, you are amendable to actually having chairs in the very back here, socially distanced so that some people who cannot go upstairs can use the chairs here. I heard that, something that you'll work on with the staff?
I did not speak about being on the floor. Obviously, we have limited space down here. So obviously, I want to be, you know, it's not just my decision. We've got to make sure that the people who are, you know, make, you know, take care of City Hall. But the thought would be is, you know, we've got to have a framework, but I want the City Hall personnel who'll be doing this to help us make sure that we set ground rules. I don't think we'll have people, my concern about having participants or the public on the floor is that we have the situation where people might be having sidebars and then we have the whole breakdown of the social distancing. That's just my initial concern if we're close. I don't want to keep participants and public away from us. I just want to make sure that we, we kind of set up the social distancing. So that has to be further worked out and certainly I understand that and take, that's part of it is try to figure out. But we do have to have areas where we want the public to sit. And, you know, I'd rather, I don't know if it makes sense to have people on the floor right next to us at this time.
And I hear you. My only concern is if you put them behind the screen, can they hear? But I'm going to leave that to you. But I do think if they're against the heaters and they're socially distanced and not, I'm not talking anywhere near the chairs we had, but literally maybe 10 on each side or 12, that might work. But I'm going to leave that to you, but I do think it's something that you might want to consider. Also, just for a point of information, I do want to make sure I do understand correctly, as we are going back to just the one meeting and we are going to go to, we're still going to keep Zoom in, in process. So if a council cannot make the meeting, they can't participate 100% via the Zoom model like we have today, is that correct?
If a council, what we've been doing is if a council cannot participate, we have a second meeting. So there is that potential. I guess the council has to decide. I want to make sure that we don't have, at the end of the day, logistically, I don't want to have a situation where applicant feels that they were not given, you know, a full hearing. And so my concern is if we do have, it could open us up to litigation if we, if we rule against someone. So my thought would be that if all counselors are, just initial thought is all counselors are in the building, then we would have a single hearing. I think it will run against the thought that we do not have counselors in person and we're having a single hearing. That's just my thought and avoiding any kind of allegations that we're not allowing due process.
And I did miss at the beginning, so I'm glad you stated that. So, okay, so your thought is if it's, if a council cannot be here, they can't participate hybrid, but then at that point, you think that we should go to a two-meeting for a special permit? And that's fine. I just want to make sure I understand it.
Sorry, just to clarify, the point was that they were not attending at all or actually participating via Zoom?
So my question is this, we have, we're saying that we're going to go to in-person here, in-person meetings, both invite the public. We're going to go back to a one meeting for all special permits where we've been doing two. My question is, will we are still going to have the Zoom feature available to the public? If, for instance, I'm in California traveling, can I participate in the Zoom meeting in full capacity? That's what I'm trying to understand vet so we don't have that question come up at a future date, me or anybody else for that matter?
And that's something I would confirm before we move forward, that we have it. Ground rules was solicited, Don Con, but Council Melville is the one with a wealth of knowledge, so I'll ask him. Council Melville.
I gotta be honest, I have, that is not what I was intending when I asked the first question. We, we don't want to complicate this anymore. So if a counselor is on a business trip, we don't want to have that have a negative effect on a, and add an extra hearing to a, to a petitioner. So my suggestion is would you keep this to a single hearing like we are doing now? If a counselor can't make a hearing, for whatever reason, they would let both the clerk and the chair know so that you would, you would be, ensure that we do have, as Council Manny Martin stated correctly, that we would have a quorum. And then based on that, the counselor could participate via Zoom that way. Otherwise, you are actually opening up yourself for a lot, because it would appear as if you're trying to cause a second hearing for an applicant. So I would suggest keeping it to one meeting unless, of course, like many meetings happen, content of the meeting requires a recess of that hearing and we come back. That would be my suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Melville. And I guess my comment was is that we want to avoid situations where we don't have a quorum here, but also we have a number of members who are on Zoom so then it becomes more problematic. So, and once again, I'm just trying to give thoughts and framework, but I'm going to ask Council Danforth to comment. Thank you.
Council Saslaw, right now, we're operating under the governor's order. As soon as the governor's order expires, you may not be able to attend via Zoom. However, I understand there is a movement afoot to have this permanently as an option, but it may not happen. So you can attend via Zoom until the order expires at this point.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you. All good, important information. And once again, before we, before the date comes, any of those questions would be answered. But like I said, I stated in the beginning that this, we are allowed to do this because of the emergency order, which is now over a year old. So I have to believe for good government that the state legislature or the governor will work to allow, enhance public participation via Zoom or some other technology. But any other councils want to speak at this time or comment? Hearing at this point, I entertain a motion regarding reconvening and reopening for public Council Rosina.
Thank you, Mr. President. Make a motion to approve and move forward with in-person participation from the public starting on May 13th with specific guidelines in place. So moved.
On the motion, all in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Thank you. Can I get a motion to adjourn the committee of the whole?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
You've heard the motion, all in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. This meeting's adjourned.